Who's been ordering all the parts and has probably learned more about the model trains. But really, thank you to all. That was great. I should use you more to prepare my content because if we set like water management to that music, maybe it would be a little more interesting. Let's see. So next up, we have Corey who's going to present the results of the tech survey and you're using your laptop on the screen, right?
I am, yep. Hate that the HDMI is on the opposite side of these new laptops. It's got to recognize my face. There we go. Alright, I love that. I found that cartoon on a site I went to and I just loved it, so. Okay, so we did last spring, we did our first technology survey and they asked me to follow up this summer with another one. So it was rolled out right before I went on vacation, a couple of weeks ago, to all five communities. You guys are the first ones to get your results. So thank you, first I want to thank everyone who took it, but... I sent out 228 surveys and got 70 back. Yeah, old boy is right. So that's only a 36% return rate. You know, one of the things Kathy and I were talking about this morning is, and those that did send it back, I got some great ideas for future classes, but really this helps me know, and I had, you know, some more tech savvy people were like, well this really, I'm not your demographic and you all are my demographic because I'm trying to, you know, teach and help to all levels. And there's a lot of you that bring me things that are above what I'm sometimes not so much capable of, but know off the top of my head, so it causes me to research and do some more. So I appreciate all levels of interest and... So, but as far as results go, so I hit some of the bigger questions that were asked on it. So number three, which devices do you currently own or use? The number one out of the 70 people that responded was 60 of you said smartphones. Number two was smart TVs, 45, which obviously with our changeover, we had a couple of years ago now, that, you know, spurned more smart TVs coming in because we needed them to upgrade our system. Number three was tablet, actually tablets or iPads and laptops tied with 41 each. And streaming devices was fifth with 29 out of the 70 that said they used it. What activities do you frequently do on the internet? So the top five in that email followed by streaming. So all those smart TVs now, more people are streaming. Number three was work or research on their devices. Video chats, 31, so, you know, almost half of the people said they do some sort of video chat. And number five was games, whether it was solitaire, jigsaw, puzzles, whatever kind of games are out there. Number seven, this was another one we added, this was not on last year, but do you currently stream TVs or movies? 77% of the 70 that responded are streaming some sort of TV or movie. And I know just from who I help and everything, that number's got to be higher across the community. As far as the top streaming apps, Prime Video with 38, Netflix with 36, PBS Passport with 32, BritBox 20, and other, 19 people said other. I thought I had pretty much covered them, so I don't know what others there are out there, but... Maybe I don't want, no, I had Acorn on it, maybe I don't want to know what you're, the 19 others streaming. So smart technology, obviously for those of you who know me, for the three years I've been in this role, that's how I started with the promotion of smart technology. What kind of smart technology do you already own? 22% said some sort of virtual assistant, whether it be an Alexa device, Hey Google, Siri. And then 56% said you don't own any smart tech. And then there was a smattering of one or two with smartwatches or some smart bulbs, smart switches, things like that. What types of technology are you interested in? So TV streaming, oh, I said Google, now my phone's going off. Don't say the G word. Social media? eBooks, as far as Libby, Canopy type stuff like that. Medical aids, some sort of technology things to help with daily activities came up. Smart homes, even though people aren't using it as much, they say they're still interested in learning about it. Games. Security, that's a big one, things to help keep you safe. AI uses. And all kinds, someone said, just everything, teach them about everything. The new one we also added this year to last year was about the community app. So do you use the community app? 59 said yes, 10 said no. Thankfully, no one said, "There's a community app." So we're at least doing a good job of getting the word out there about it. I was actually doing this last night while Eddie and I were watching TV and I started laughing. He's like, and the show wasn't funny, he's like, "What's so funny?" So... Do you find the community app helpful? One more person said they found it helpful, then actually used it. So someone hit no by mistake or was lying, didn't want to admit they used it, but liked it. Suggestions for the community app, this was really pretty varied and obviously some things we can look at adding, some things are kind of beyond what we can add because it requires a higher level of either corporate. A more up-to-date calendar within the app. Activity signup, there were quite a few out of the 70 who said that. An organizational chart with actual decision makers. So when you guys bring something to Paula and she like looks into it, who above her would actually have the right to make the decision? Daily dining specials earlier, so that if you've got to put your dinner order in or lunch order in by time, you have it and it's listed there earlier. Recycling guidelines, which I don't know if they're already in the handbook or if it's something we can look at creating to put in there. Less redundancy. You know, someone said, "How many notifications do we need that the shuffleboard is canceled?" Right, right, amen, hallelujah. Timely removal of expired items. Updated info on previous alerts. So if, I think if we put out a memo that was something was, you know, broken, not working, an update as to it's working, now it's back in order, things like that. A monthly invoice for your monthly service fees that you could access on that as opposed to having them mailed out, saving, they were very nice, saving the company postage and also staff time to get those together and mailed out. More details of trips, concerts, and lectures. So in just, instead of saying, you know, Laura Collins is coming for a concert, well, what kind of music does Laura Collins play? Or if it's a lecture, more information on that, so you'll make better informed decisions on what you want to come to. Dining hours for placing to-go orders, when do they have to be in by? Resident pictures, so we don't force anybody to put their resident photo in the app. And resident bios, that was mentioned by quite a few. You know, really nice bio goes in the bulletin when a new resident moves in, but why isn't it in the app? And we really leave that up to you to add your bios. I know I've said before, if people need help, they're not sure how to add it, I can always sit down and help you do that. But it is a great way to, you know, kind of find out about your friends and neighbors as they move in. Have you participated in any of my technology classes? 23 said yes, 43 said no, 3 said they were not aware of my classes. So how better? I mean, I know it normally goes in the bulletin, it's on the calendar, it's on the in-house channel. Is there another way to help inform people about the classes? What class format do you prefer? Only 6 said they liked the large group lecture. 25 said they liked the small, 19, private one-on-one, obviously we all like one-on-one attention. And 19 said it really doesn't matter. Ironically, when I went from the large, one-time-a-month big class down to two times a month, a morning class and an afternoon class, I actually get lesser people than I was getting in the one big class, so... So who knows? When you have needed technology help in the past, whom do you usually turn to? I know quite a few people in the comments said, you know, while I checked Corey or I checked Steve, I rely on both of them, or I, you know, I go to family and everything. Really, when I put this on, especially for the computer, those who did it in paper could check however many they wanted, but we really wanted to know, who was your first go-to? Who do you usually turn to? Is it your family or friends? Is it me, Steve? Or do you just do it yourself and hope for the best? Are there areas of technology you're hesitant or afraid of using and why? AI, of course, comes up to intimidating, everyone said, "I'm worried about the security, it's taking jobs," it's, you know... Transferring to the cloud or an external device because you're afraid you'll lose everything. Electronic payments such as Zelle, Venmo, PayPal, are they really secure? How do I know I've set it up correctly? How do I know I'm sending it to the right person? Smart technology, afraid of privacy issues, you know, Alexa's listening to everything I say. Streaming apps, too complicated to maneuver and find what you want and everything. And this was my favorite answer, afraid I would blow up the earth. Alright, any quick questions about the survey and I'm going to quickly do the scam of the month? Yes?
Do you, just out of interest, collect a record of who uses VPNs? Because I read in the resident guide that it was advisable to, and I do, but it's, you know, it takes resources.
I don't, I was gonna, so the question was, do we keep track of who uses a VPN? The only way I know is if you ask me or Steve to help you set it up, then we kind of know, but we don't really.
Well, I mean, I guess my question really is, is the network safe to do stuff like banking, for example, without VPN?
So, one of the big things, and people tell you this, if you look, a lot of times when you see your sign-in for the Eddierez, some computers, I know Macs specifically, will say, "Weak security." So the way it has always been explained to me is that, yes, we're password protected and yes, everybody knows what this password is, but there is still a level of security to it. It is just not to the level where it's going to block you from going to sites. So if Mr. Smith wants to go to one of those other streaming sites, we can't say no. The way we have your network set up will not say no to you. It'll let you go wherever you want because corporate doesn't feel that we have the right to say, "You know, you can't go to that site, we don't feel it's safe that it's up to you." So that's why they say, "Weak security." But I've always been told, ultimately, it's secure, so. VPNs, I will tell you, on our network, I have also been told, will slow down your rate of speed, your megabits per second.
Yeah, that was my, forgive me, that was exactly my point.
Yes.
I'm debating, is it necessary?
Yes, yeah. So, and that's kind of a, if you want the extra protection and you're okay with a slower speed, that's fine. If you want to use it for like banking stuff and not use it for streaming Netflix and things like that, then that's up to you. Yes? So a VPN is called a virtual private network. Basically, it would take the, if you think of Eddierez as a big giant tunnel, a VPN is giving you your own private tunnel to travel on within the big tunnel. Helps give you a little bit more security. Does that make sense? It does, you have to pay for a VPN depending on which company you use, so, yeah. Okay, any more questions about the survey? Alright, quickly, scam of the month. So scam of the month, we're going to focus on spoofing. Has anyone heard of spoofing when it comes to scams? So basically, the definition of spoofing is the ability to manipulate caller ID to look like another number. Specifically here, we're talking about your doctor's office, a hospital, Medicare, your pharmacy. And basically, some examples of spoofing are, you get a call from your doctor's office, quote unquote, and they're saying, "Your doctor says you need a back brace, please confirm your Medicare number to proceed." Right, no. "Your test results are ready, but we need your social security number to verify it's you." Good, alright, you're all passed on that one. "Medicare is updating your records, can you please confirm the details with a yes or a no?" You can nod or shake your head, but don't say yes or no. "This is your pharmacy, we need your date of birth and insurance information to refill your prescription." So some of those are examples of spoofing calls that are coming in. What to do, basically, if you get those? If you suspect a spoofing call, hang it up and up. The one thing I always say is, if it's important, they'll leave a message, right? And you can call back whoever, you can look up the number and call them, call back a number that you know, that you trust. Never share personal information with callers you don't know, right? I've said this in my spam talks for the past couple of years. You are under no obligation to give anybody information to a call, an email, a text message that you did not initiate. Never respond to questions with yes or no. Maybe, is that your, maybe it's my number? Hang up. Medicare will never call a recipient. They're not just going to call you out of the blue to check on things. Check your Medicare summary notices and your explanation of benefits for suspicious claims or like supplies or telehealth visits that you know you didn't request or receive. Alright. That'll be in the bulletin too, so you have a copy of it and you can look it over and... Yes?
This is about phone calls, what about, what about text messages? Which we get all the time, reminding of appointments and so on.
So she asked about text messages that we get quite frequently, reminding you about appointments and everything. If it's legitimate and you know what you, but if they're giving, like I get, I get text messages or I get notifications, I have a new message in my, you know, health app or whatever. You could go to that, you don't have to use the link that they send. But it should say, like I just had, you know, a follow-up with a surgeon and everything and I got a text message, you know, reminding me my follow-up appointment. It had the right date, the right time, but I didn't have to click on anything. Things like that, I would say, you know, don't click on links to anything. If you're, if you get something and it's for an appointment that you know you don't have, for maybe a doctor you don't go to, then just delete the text, you can block it as well, so.
Wouldn't you agree that a minimum, all they're asking is yes to confirm?
Yeah, yeah, but a lot of times, so Paula said, you know, sometimes they're asking for a minimum of yes to confirm. If you know it's legitimate, confirm, otherwise do not because all you're doing is you're letting them know that this is a real live person at this number. I on vacation, I am on vacation last week, got a text message, I knew it was a scam. I knew it was, and it was, "Hey, it's Eileen, how are you? I haven't talked to you in a while." And I was like, I was like, I was on vacation, I was bored, I was like, "I'm great, how are you?" "Do you remember me?" I was like, "No, I don't, remind me where we met again." I just kept it going. Unfortunately, now I'm getting a bunch of likely scam calls because I let her know that. But I had fun playing with her, him, it, whatever it was, so. Alright, any other questions for me? Okay. This is my phone. Got it off.
Where'd the cord go here?
Turn on the light.
Uh, it's okay, I'll have a PowerPoint up in a minute, but... Okay, so... I first just wanted to provide an update on our, on the water and the Legionella and the testing and all that. So I'll start with just kind of reviewing the timeline. I know a lot of you were here when Cassie Foley was here, who's our infection preventionist for the St. Peter's Health Partners. I think, I thought she did a very, a lot of information in her presentation, did a good job. So basically, we did testing across the campus. We did testing at the nursing home at the terrace and here. And we sent samples, not because anybody was sick, it was just, this is what we were doing. We've been testing on an annual basis. So when we got those test results, we did have Legionella in different areas. So based on those test results, the immediate directions that we received were to remove all aerators. If we couldn't remove the aerator, clean them and flush our water system, which we flushed a few different times. Then we had a water specialist coming in and recommended a chlorinating system to do a one-time treatment that flushes the system with higher levels of chlorine. Safe levels of chlorine, but higher levels of chlorine. So before we did that chlorinating treatment, but after we had done the cleaning of the aerators or removing of the aerators, we did testing because we wanted to see if, what would the effect of just removing the aerators had and flushing the system. So we got those test results back and all the areas that were positive were now negative except for one. So, and I should back up a little bit. When we took samples and we did testing and included this building, not the cottages. So now we are doing a second round of testing, which included that one positive area that we still had. And then we also tested each cottage building, so each triplex or duplex. So that's basically where we stand, we have not gotten those test results back. I should also mention, when I talk about the chlorinating flush that we did, it's for the main building here, it was not for the cottages. So that's a separate water system and water delivery. So we're just waiting for those test results to come back to see that we are, in fact, we do not have any Legionella in the cottages and that that one area that was positive is now negative. So going forward, again, we're working with a water management team. He hasn't come up with long-term plans, we were kind of fixing the situation at hand. My guess is, based on what he told us, we're going to be changing out those aerators once a year. Some of the things that have taken longer than we anticipated were that we couldn't change the aerators out and we had to change the whole faucet. Now, since we've changed the whole faucet, when we go to do this next year, it should be much quicker and much more efficient. So that is basically where we're at with the water, Fred, you have anything to add?
No.
Does anybody have any questions? Yes?
What about the showerheads? I live in a cottage. Were they tested?
The showerheads have a different, the reason why the...
I use mine.
Yeah. So the reason why faucets are more important is because an aerator creates a mist and puts the mist in the air where you inhale. The showerheads are open, plus you raise the temperature up and you usually disinfect it. But there's no mist that comes out except for maybe the steam. So we're not really worried too much about a showerhead as we are for... So basically, in an aerator, you have a screen. The screen gets collected with the dirt and all the bacteria can grow. And that's why we're really worried about, that's usually where it comes from. I had to step back a little bit, but, so that's why the aerators are important. A showerhead is a big head that's got many holes in it and the water gushes right out. Nothing usually gets trapped in it.
What would make a, an inner shower curtain that's fabric, okay, not plastic? Get all black on the bottom.
So what happens is that it...
What are your questions?
She, she was asking a question about the showerhead, I mean, the shower curtains, why you get black on the bottom? The black on the bottom is because they're not drying. So when you open up and you have it touching against the bottom of the rail or something, it's not getting a chance to dry, so therefore the mold or anything can build up on it. And basically, the black, black is just, it's not a deadly, it's not black mold, it's just a mold that is normally growing that comes into your apartment. So what you want to do is you want to make sure you open them up or you change them out. There's a protective film usually on a shower curtain, but because of the use and the length of the time you had it up, you're taking that protective coating off. So eventually, anything can grow onto it. You do want to change your shower curtains on a regular basis.
You can wash them too.
You can wash them, soap their fabric.
This would not come out.
Yeah, so basically, you need to...
And it said, "Don't use bleach."
You really need to change them like a yearly basis. Yeah.
Should we still run the shower before?
No, that was a precaution measure that we did at the time to make sure. That's not something you have to keep kind of doing. The question is, do I have to, sorry about that. Still trying to get used to this. The question is that, do you have to keep wearing the shower on a continuous basis before you get in? You don't have to because we've already done most of the tests and we don't have it anymore. That was a precaution measure that we brought up to make sure you just always were having, to make sure it wasn't in the water. Anything else? Yeah?
So are we assuming that all the aerators, including the cottages, have been changed?
We haven't done the cottages because we're waiting for test results.
So, I can talk to that a little bit. So we've talked about the cottages because we had some variation here in the building with faucets and aerators and, which has, that's why it's taken us so long to replace them with the cottages. I think we have even more variation as to what's out there, what's there. So before we go through and change every faucet out there, we want to see, that's why we did the testing, to see, do we even have any concerns there? So that's going to dictate what our next step is going to be. At a minimum, it would be at least cleaning or replacing the aerators that we could there.
And one other question, follow-up. So we no longer need to run the shower for five minutes before we get in it. Isn't it still recommended that you, if you don't use the shower that often, do you run it?
Yeah, so the question, if you couldn't hear, was if you're not running it for five minutes before you get in, to run the showers periodically, yes. The answer to that is yes. If you have a second bathroom or just a bathroom you don't use that frequently, it is a good idea. And that's what I'm kind of waiting for, kind of for our follow-up plan. I think that'll be part of the recommendations to, you know, flush those systems on a somewhat periodic basis.
And sinks too.
Sinks as well, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
If you, since you only tested one... If you, since you only tested one cottage of the triplex.
Yeah.
How, how does that, I mean, does that really give you a true picture of the situation?
So the question was, because we tested, so if it's a triplex, we tested one, and we tested the middle because?
The middle, the middle because that's where the water comes into the building. We want to make sure that if it's coming into the building from the water supply, and usually you collect it, most of the time, and like, the reason why this building is affected is because the water runs 2,000 feet inside the building from the out point of where the city water comes in. Usually in a cottage, you're only a hundred-foot line. The main water line runs down the road. So therefore, the water coming into the building, we want to make sure it's not coming into the building from the water supply.
And the recommendation for the testing is, is testing a loop, right? So from one start to one finish point? So correct me if I'm wrong, but each cottage building would be one loop.
One loop.
So if we're testing one on that loop, it's safe to assume that everything on that loop is good?
Does the water enter where the meter is?
The water enters in, but then it goes, circulates around, so you have a continuous loop in the building. And that's why we test the one.
In the triplex, in the whole?
In the triplex, but doesn't matter where we hit it. Anywhere we can get it in the building is testing the water for the whole building.
Okay. Yes?
I have a question about faucets. Somebody came to check my bathroom faucets, but when they looked at the kitchen faucet, they said, "Oh, that faucet is a newer faucet. We're not doing that." Is that the case? How does that work? They kind of blew off the kitchen faucet.
So the question was, your bathroom faucet needed to be changed out, correct?
Well, nobody has changed it yet.
Okay.
They just took the aerators out.
So we're not changing faucets if we could take the aerator out? So if we could just replace the aerator, that's what we're going to do. Sometimes if the faucets were older, the.
The aerators didn't match.
The aerators would not match, and we could not get those aerators anymore. So sometimes just replacing the aerator was not feasible in different places. So if, if we could replace the aerator, we did. And that's it. That's the end of it. If we could not, that's when we're having to replace the faucets.
And then your, your kitchen faucet's brand-new, which hasn't been there long enough to build up any bacteria in it. So therefore.
It's seven years old.
It's seven years old?
Yeah.
Then it probably has the aerator that we don't have at the time, so it's probably on the list to be redone.
We can check specifically.
We can check.
Is it safe to use it?
It's safe to use.
At a minimum, if we couldn't remove the aerator, it was cleaned. Yes. So it wasn't, if it, if we couldn't replace it, we cleaned it, so it didn't have the buildup on it.
It's holding all out.
But one of the, one of the things we did is like, the apartments that had Legionella, by running the hot water and running our cleaning system through it, because we ran the chlorine system through, we went around to every apartment, we opened them up to run. And then when we went back to test them, they were all okay. And we didn't change the faucets at the time in those apartments or the aerators. All we did was do was.
We removed them.
We removed the aerators. But, just like most of the other ones. But every single one of them, by running the water through it and getting the heat through it, we ended up killing whatever bacteria we had.
Yeah.
Is there any targeted completion date for faucets?
We're hoping by the end of this week. We're praying. We got all the, they're all in. We got a nice supply of things, it's just a matter of manpower.
The question was completion date for the faucets? Or aerator replacement?
Or air. So we have every aerator and faucet we need right now in the building. So we're not, as of today, we're not waiting for supplies, because we just got a shipment in.
Yeah.
In the cottages, we put the faucets in, or you know, pay them to the contractor to put in. Now, there are special faucets. Are they being replaced by light faucets? There's a reason for what faucets.
So the question was, you've put in special faucets, are they going to be replaced?
Right.
So we're going to wait until we see what the cottage results are. And if we don't have any Legionella that is noted in the cottages, we're not going to change out any faucets. If we do, then we're going to have to go back to the drawing board and game plan and see.
Because they're fairly expensive faucets.
Yeah. So the question is, we're waiting to see what the, the test results show, which we should have end of this week, by, by the end of next week, I would say, to be safe. Yeah. So we'll keep you updated as we learn more. Next, I just wanted to move on to power outage. So in the event of a power outage, we do have power in the common areas and in the kitchens, the hallways, the stairwells for a few hours. There is no power, and I'm sure you all know this, including heat and AC in the apartments or the cottages. We have the ability to operate one elevator at a time, and those are the elevators near the commons. So you need to contact security if an elevator is needed. So along with Legionella, we also had a power outage in the same week. So we had a stellar week here at Beverwood. So after we had the power outage this time, as well as other times, we gathered as a team to figure out, okay, what went right? What went wrong? What do we need to look at? So after this past outage, here were some of the things that we are looking at, have done. So looking at adding at least one elevator per wing to the generator so they can all operate at the same time. We've had the electrician here. He of course has to talk to Otis Elevator to get us, you know, what we would need. Do we have the room on our current generator to make that happen? So, you know, we've started that ball rolling and looking into it. That's ideal state. The rest of kind of what we planned and game planned for is assuming nothing changes. Ideally, we'd like it to, but if it does not, we talked about verifying on-call staff that need to be notified and come in. So there's an on-call security person, on-call maintenance, because these never happen Monday through Friday, nine to five, ever. So the facilities manager, who's Fred, and the executive director, at a minimum, these are the people that need to be here to help and assist. The fact that we only have the one elevator usage at a time, the safety issue number one, and a lot of manpower. You need a lot of manpower to go through and make sure people are getting where they need to go. But when using the elevator, security needs to verify that the resident has reached their intended floor. So we had an issue with this last power outage. Security went, they got on the elevator. We switched the key at the front desk, but they didn't get to where they were supposed to go. So they were stuck in the elevator. Security had left, assuming everything's good, moving on to the next wing to use that elevator. We are assuming, we may have switched the key too soon, so if it was in south, we knew we were going to north next, and we switched it to north. We're assuming that's what may have happened, but either way, nobody verified that the person that got in the elevator got up to the second floor. So that's one thing that we would change. So whoever the security person is, really doesn't have to be security, who's ever getting the resident on the elevator, needs to make sure that they've reached the intended floor. We've updated the elevator signage so that the ones furthest from the core should have signage to say that they're out of order, so they can't be used at all. And then the elevators near the core have signage that states, "To please call security before using the elevator." Otis Elevator's been in, because we also did get reports that not all the lights were working in the elevator, so that's been repaired. Fred, correct?
Yes, that's what.
Yep. Oxygen. So residents.
You want to go over the phone system there?
What?
Tell them, but make sure that when they use the phone, there's emergency phone in there to push the button.
So the emergency, yes, there's an emergency phone in each elevator that you need to push the button, which will then alert us that somebody is in that elevator if you need help in there. But we need to make sure the lights are on so you can see where the phone is. So oxygen is indicated on the flipper sheets that the security uses, which is just a simple list of all the residents in the building that they use when they put up the flippers and in the cottages as well. So we did update the resident handbook so that they are where they need, the residents need to let security know if they are on oxygen or any other medical device that may need power. We have a ton of extension cords that we can get to somebody who could power their equipment. If you are in a cottage, then that obviously is different. An extension cord's not going to reach to the building, and, but it's good to know. So if you are in a cottage and have such a medical device, please let us know. What we could do is then offer rooms here as they were available, but I don't know that we have a good handle on what equipment people have out in the cottage currently, so it would be good to get that, to say that, you know, if we had 10 different residents that needed to come here in a power outage, would we be able to accommodate that? And their medical equipment. So I think the first step is really trying to figure that out, of what, what we would actually need. I've reached out to the North Bethlehem Fire Department Chief. Fred has also reached out to his contact, just to see, you know, with fires and really any disaster planning, to see if they have any recommendations. Anything that they could come and tell you? Anything that we should be doing? What drill should, what drill should look like? So what, what improvements can we make? So we've reached out to them. I haven't heard back. I don't know if you've heard back.
No.
No, okay. I'm sure they will get back, back in touch with us. So a prolonged power outage, usually it does not extend beyond a few hours. If it were to extend beyond that, we do have transfer agreements with other, any housing sites. So this is really where it becomes the benefit of being part of a system. You know, we, we have these agreements with other systems, but we have emergency management people who work with us. You know, we could really pool a lot of resources if we needed to evacuate the whole building. Transfer agreements with the ARC on Crunk Hill. Access to any disaster shelter set up with the Town of Bethlehem. I have worked with, and I can't remember his title, his name is Jack Brennan, but I can't remember his title in the Town of Bethlehem, but I've worked with him to say, you know, what would we do? He, you know, we at least have contact information. He contacts us periodically to make sure he's got the right people, names and emails and things like that. And then we would, again, if you have another place to go, it would be recommended to go if it were going to be a prolonged power outage. So that's power. So I did talk about the immediate things we're looking at is obviously getting those elevators added to the generator. And as I've reported in previous meetings, we are really looking at, the next step would be to get generators at the cottages. So we've been looking at that. We've had several different quotes over the past couple of months, have submitted one that we think is the most viable. So that's, that's where we're at. Yes?
We talked to council about reminding people about the light bulbs.
Oh, good point. So light bulbs that you were given act as a flashlight. So you just remind where that is there. It, it needs to be in the, in an actual light, because that's what charges it. And then when you lose power, you can unscrew that light bulb, hook it to the bottom piece, and then it works as a flashlight. I've also seen, I was in an apartment today, when I'm in apartments, I kind of check to see people who've got some flashlights plugged in. I would always recommend it. I have them in my house. Good idea.
Where do we keep them?
Except at Stark. And how do you find the base?
Well, I would keep the base in a place that you know you're going to be, on a keyring if you've got it. Yeah, that you know you're going to be, you know where it is. If you don't have one, Fred, I have no idea if we have anymore, but.
I don't know about the flashlights. I know we have the light bulbs, but I don't know about.
The light, we have, if we have the light bulbs.
They're in my office.
If you need some, let us know. Yeah, we did give them out last year. If, if you haven't gotten one, or you don't know where yours is, we do have some extras. Let us know. Alright. So in the event of a fire, so the place, the safest place to be is stay where you're at. If you're in your room, and of course, if the fire's in your room, get out. But absent of that, the safest place to be is just stay where you're at until you receive further instruction. If you need to evacuate, someone's going to let you know. And in fact, you know, and these are some of the details I want to clarify with the chief. Really, the chief is going to be the one to let us know, you need to evacuate here, here, and here. Obviously, if there's a fire in the room, and you're getting smoke in the room next to the fire, we're going to evacuate. But all of the walls that butt up against another apartment, your apartment doors and all the doors in the hallway are fire-rated. The building is fully sprinkled, including your apartments too. So if there were a fire in the far north, it's really not going to affect the west or the south. So it's, it'd be scary, obviously, but, but, so it's not that a fire would cause the whole building to evacuate. We would not need to do that. Let's see, what else? Like I said, if you're in the commons, stay there for further direction. Ways to prevent fire alarms, be mindful of what's on the stove. Microwaves or toasters, open windows if you notice things are getting smoky. Those, those smokeheads are sensitive, but purposely. So, you know, it's a balancing act, but just be mindful of what you're cooking, the amount of smoke.
Yeah, the fire, the fire can turn twice.
Yes. Yes. And then obviously, no candles. And then to get help, call security at 8803. Pendants, pull cords, those are all ways to get help. So basically, you know, I just wanted to bring up here that, you know, we are, we do look at it, we do look at it constantly. After we have an event, we look at it to see what we can improve. And I do think we have some opportunities here that we can work with the, we can work with the fire department to say, here's what we can do to just educate people more, practice a little more. So, you know, I look forward to working with them, and then hopefully bringing that back to you. Yeah, you had a question in the back first?
If there's a power outage, will the phone in the elevator work?
So the question was, in a power outage, will the phone in the elevator work? And the answer is yes.
How about the phones in the hall?
Yes, the phones work in the power outage. Yeah? Yes?
There are also some outlets that have that green sticker or whatever.
Yes. So there are some outlets in the hallway that have a green sticker. That means that that is working on generator. So if we lose power, those outlets have power. So that's why if somebody has a piece of medical equipment, we have the extension cords that we can run from the apartment to those outlets. And they are, and those green stickers are not, you know, it's, it's not a fail-proof method. So I believe there's probably more outlets that may not be identified. So if you find that you need one, I know people were maybe looking to charge their phones, just go outlet to outlet, you'll find one soon. They are in every hallway. But some are identified with green stickers, but stickers fall off, and we try and maintain it the best we can. Yeah?
What about evacuation drills? If you had to evacuate, how would you be informed and where would you go?
So, well, we do have our new messenger, our Point Click Care Messenger that we're working with. If we were to evacuate, we're going to be taking direction from the fire department. Like I said, we're going to have the Town of Bethlehem, we're going to be working with them. If this whole building has to evacuate, but I did want to point out, and I'd like the fire chief to confirm it, it would be very rare that we're evacuating this whole building. And if we are, I don't think it's going to be, we have to evacuate in the next half hour. I think it's going to be, you might want to consider evacuating, maybe it's a weather-related event that we see coming where we may have hours to do it, not minutes. So.
But how would you be informed?
The Glenn, where we had the fire?
Yes.
They sent, the chief went to each manager, gave us a wing, and sent us, and we went down, knocked on doors. Need to get out, need to get out.
So when Cory, when Cory had to put this into practice, it was the fire department that gave direction to the staff to say, "Wing the." to say, wing to wing, go knock on the door, you got to get out.
Yeah. And actually, so what happened was the sheriff showed up before the fire chief, and he made the decision to evacuate the whole building, which the fire guy was like, you don't need to, it's one wing. But at that point, almost everybody was out. So, but yeah.
And where you're going, I think would depend on the situation that's occurring. Yes?
So, one of the issues is that everyone, unfortunately, is not ambulatory here. So they can't, you're saying, okay, everybody out. Not everybody can get out. So then, you know, even within our neighborhoods, it could be helpful to have a drill where we're just alerted to, okay, we need to check on each other. And how, what help is going to be available in order for everybody to-
Every fire department.
So, the question is not everybody is ambulatory. So even current state, and I know this is not ideal. Current state, we have elevators we can use. So we can get people, it's not like they're going to be trapped without us, the ability to use it. Is it going to take us longer because we can only use one wing at a time? Yes. That's why I think it would be, I think it would increase our safety tremendously if we could get at least one on every wing on. With that being said, you mentioned drills, and I agree. And that's what I kind of want to work with the fire department on, what's the most meaningful way to do it? And honestly, what I would be looking for, if there's a drill, I'm looking for you all to stay put until you're told to do something differently because that's really what you should be doing. So if we say there's a fire in this hall, what are we doing? And then I would say, okay, we're going to stay here until somebody tells us. And then we would knock on the door and say, okay, let's go. But drilling, I think, is a good idea. So, I agree. And that's kind of what I'm waiting to hear from them to see the best way to do that and involve them. Because in our more skilled settings, we do. We have to. So they come, they do a drill with us at the terrace. So, I know that they'd be willing to do that. Yes?
What's the full security number so that it would work on itself?
Is it 451-8803?
Can you repeat the question?
So the question was, what is the full security number?
482.
482.
Now, 8803 is actually, this is going to be confusing, but 8803 is actually one of our extensions, and it forwards to a security, the security cellphone. There's also a cellphone number that's associated with it, but what you guys need to know is the 8803.
Okay, so it's 482-
482-8803. Yep? All right.
Good question.
Yes?
Yeah, a question is, within the buildings, do any of our neighbors, neighborhoods, groups, whatever, have any plans for checking on each other within the neighborhood on an outage like that? What do we do?
So the question is, in any of the neighborhoods or wings, do we have a plan to check on each other? I would say, if you know that your neighbor is somebody you might want to check on, you could certainly do that. I don't think it's a plan that we should put into place and be held accountable to because that can change with the resident population that's here.
Sure.
Yes, yes.
A reminder that we want to sign in here. We sign into independent living. And so what we do is part, in my opinion, is what these individuals take to help each other rather than something you force on us.
Right, so I, so, thank you. You said it better than I. But it was, you know, that it is independent living and if it's something you choose to do for your neighbor, that's something you choose to do for your neighbor. But I don't think it would be a formal organized, here is a plan, that would, that we would execute.
Do you want the direct cell? If a power outage, cell to cell?
So if you want the direct cell for security?
518.
518.
366.
366.
2341.
2341.
Eliminates our phone system.
Yep, so that is helpful if our phone system goes down. That is also going to get you to security cellphone. If our internal phone goes down, you can still get security through that.
Would you repeat that number?
518.
518.
366.
366.
2341.
2341. You could put it on a slide too, if we need to.
Why don't you put it as the monthly bulletin?
Or the monthly bulletin, there you go. Yes?
Is it in the app?
It's hard to imagine.
Is the app, is the cellphone listed?
I don't know if it is, but we can.
It might be something.
Yep. Yep.
I don't understand why it would be too expensive to have two elevators working when there's a power outage.
That's what we're looking into now. And I don't, I don't know that it would be. I, we're looking to see if we, would we have to add additional generators to get that to work, to have, I think having three elevators on one generator. So that's what we're looking at now. Yes, Mr. Coleman?
Okay, as the Houston City Rep on the Resident's Council, I see and hear a lot of good information they presented here. And it raised a couple of questions to me. Not everybody, all the residents are here right now. So they're missing a lot of information. There is information on the slides that will find its way into the minutes. But then there was information added verbally and so on. How did that get out to everybody? These phone numbers and so on. So, I have to make a point of all this good information passing it out to everybody by various means. Read the minutes of this meeting, read the minutes of the Resident Council meeting, check the app, talk to people. Okay, and probably these kinds of things should get updated into the handbook so when new people get here, okay, next month, next year, they know what's going on. So this is all good stuff that got, you know, assured, you know, brought on and so on. But people missing, people not here, all right. I've got to make a point that this gets documented and available at all the different means we have. Got our follow-up on that.
Thank you. And again, if we get follow-up from the fire department, maybe it's even a separate meeting. So we will, we'll go from there. So I'm going to move on with a couple of quick updates. Our offering plan, Amendment Number 44, has been reviewed by the Attorney General. So we do have copies of that, if anybody wants that, along with the audited financial statement. The audited financial statement that was included in that amendment is also Beverick's audited financial statement. You can get a copy of both the, oh, actually, you all did receive a copy, that's right. We changed it this year. So you did receive a copy of Amendment 44. If you would like the audited financial statement that is included with it, just let us know. Dryer vent cleaning in this building, in the main building, is going to start tomorrow. They're going to be doing inside and outside. So they're going to be accessing apartments to clean out the vents. Point Click Care Emergency System, you did submit if you wanted your families notified. So we did a test. It was very successful. We had 93% got the message, correct? Okay. Resident Satisfaction Survey coming in September. We are really, 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 really pushing everybody do it electronic. Because if you do it in paper, we're manually entering it into the electronic form anyway. So, we're really going to push. We're also going to use our tech committee to help with people who might need that. Oh, one last update, oh, fire road barrier. That came up at our Resident Council meeting. So I did bring it back to Fred. We talked about the necessity. Fred did indicate there is a lot of traffic and cars that go down that road. I thought maybe it was a few isolated incidents,